At this time, I'll call the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting to order with the Secretary of Police call the roll.
Commissioner Beckles?
Present.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Fawn?
Here.
Chair Beer?
Here. First items, oral communications related to the Housing Authority? We have none. Item number two, consent items, the status report in the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Call for the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
See, no public hearings, items for consideration, none. Matters from the chair commissioners, anything? See, none, we'll adjourn to October 22nd, 2013.
Kinsley, invocation.
Yeah. You want to do the vice?
Sure.
At this time, we'll open up the city council meeting and we have a closed session item, but it's going to go at the rear of the meeting instead of the beginning tonight. And that does make a difference for anybody that would like to speak on that item. So you need to speak at their regular oral communication. So if you haven't got your pink card in, you need to get it in. At this time, we will have the, well, you don't even put that on the...
Invocation.
Invocation's the word I'm looking for somewhere. We have the invocation by Kingsley and the flag salute by Dina.
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, we ask for your presence over this council meeting tonight. We ask that you bestow your blessings and wisdom to everyone present here. May your hand guide the discussions and the decisions made here tonight for the benefit of our Garden Grove community. Amen.
Amen. Please space our flag is saying, salute with me?
I need a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a community spotlight this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Mr. Okuriki to make the spotlight.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. In tonight's community spotlight, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize three outstanding individuals who committed themselves to providing one of Garden Grove's most recognized and read community newspapers. Would Jim Tutler, Mary Tutler, and Don Alexander, from the original Garden Grove Journal, please We begin tonight with a brief background of the Garden Grove Journal. The journal was founded thirty years ago, in 1983, by a general partnership between Stan Smalling and Jim Tutler, with the help of several investors, including many community leaders, such as former Garden Grove Mayor John Cannon and businessman John J. Mastriani from J's Catering. Stan and Jim were able to print their first issue on September 1st, 1983. After eight years, the partnership sold the newspaper to Marketing Arts Company. In 1991, Jim reconnected with his high school friend Marilyn Lewis at their Garden Grove High School class reunion. Three years later, in March 1994, they married and moved to West Garden Grove. A true journalist at heart, Jim's goal was to provide the city with a community-focused news product run by local staff. For this reason, the Tutlers bought the Garden Grove Journal back in December 1994. Don Alexander, a sports enthusiast and Jim's good friend, was the journal's sports columnist since the paper's inception. His articles have appeared in nearly every edition. Don and Jim also did play-by-play broadcast of local high school football and basketball games on Time Warner Cable. And following that, a sports feature program called Talking Sports.
That? I remember that.
No one else does, but we do.
Along with the co-ownership of the journal, Marilyn wrote an advice column, Dear Marilyn, for a decade. Jim operated the journal as owner, editor, publisher, and managed the paper's website. It took seven years to turn a profit, but their efforts were rewarded. By the end of his ownership, the journal had an audience of over 25,000 people each week. The newspaper was distributed each Thursday to over 100 sites in Garden Grove, Stanton, Westminster, and South Anaheim. The journal gave the community a voice and feeling of personal intimacy. People reached out to Marilyn with questions and concerns, and Don shined light on local high school sports teams. Jim's expertise in the field of journalism and commitment to delivering community news has made him a local icon in the city. He is well-known for his professionalism, fairness, integrity in the news reporting field, along with his humor and insightfulness. Passing the journal touch to the Orange County Register last month didn't mean their community involvement ended. Don is still very active in the Garden Grove Rotary Club. Marilyn is on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove and the Garden Grove Unified School District Personnel Commission. Jim is continuing his full-time career as a professor of journalism at Golden West College. He just finished his first novel, No Justice, which should be available in October. Jim, Marilyn, and Don, the city proudly salutes you for the successes you have had and the impacts you continue to make and your accomplishments in the future. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of you with a crystal memento in recognition and appreciation of your extraordinary years of service to the Garden Grove community. Thank you.
You need to stay up there for a picture now.
Congratulations.
That's electioneering for the text.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
Let's go one more. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Is there a chance to say a little something?
Go ahead.
Oh, no.
Well, thank you so much. Well, we'll get back to that in a second. It didn't break. Thank you so much. It's a beautiful recognition of myself, but especially my partners in crime here and the newspaper. One of the things that sticks with me when I think about this whole situation is someone once said that you can't understand something unless you love it. And I really love Garden Grove and Marilyn does also, you know. Garden Grove gave me a hometown that I really am crazy about. I tell people that it's the center of the universe, which I honestly believe, and it gave me, oh, she's down there picking up candy.
Sorry.
It gave me my love. We met here in Garden Grove in French class in 1967, so that's a wonderful thing.
Freshman year in high school.
That's right. There were 22 years between our first and second dates, giving you an idea how fast worker I am. And that little crash you heard was our little, it's a thing, we had a whole little thing here, but we're going to try to recoup here.
I can still do this.
Okay, getting back to the theme of love, love goes with kisses. And I know that Bruce especially, I'm looking at you, Bruce, you'd really like a whole bunch of kisses right now. So Marilyn is going to distribute the kisses, and what it is, is it's a Garden Grove Journal classic cup, and there are, of course, Hershey Kisses in there for each one of you. And having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Don. One last thing I'm going to say is, Kingsley, when I die, which hopefully won't be too much longer, no, hopefully will be a while longer, rephrase that. I want you to give the address, the eulogy, because that sounded pretty good and I sounded like a cool guy, so thanks very much.
Well, I didn't know I was going to say anything, but I just want to thank you very much. Garden Grove has always been my love, too, as far as city goes. 1973, I joined the Garden Grove Rotary Club. And Matt has been there every year since he started here. We appreciate that. Of course, Chris, and Chris, and Dina, and Bruce, and Steve, you haven't come yet, have you? You haven't visited our club yet, have you? I can't think of it. I've got to get you over there. But I thank you very much for this honor, and I wish you all the very best. And thank you for your service to the city. People who don't understand why you do this, I don't understand why you do this, but I thank you very much for that, because if it wasn't for people, for you and people like you, we couldn't have a city. Thank you.
And I, too, just want to say thank you very much. Thank you for the recognition. The research in your statements was just excellent, and I'm just very impressed. Jim is one in a million, and it's nice that everybody knows that and that he has such talent and has given 30 years to the Garden Grove Journal and to the community. So thank you so much.
In 1992, I don't think you were the owner of the paper. I think it was a small...
Yeah, Paul Coroli.
Coroli, yes.
Yeah, you missed my name.
Yes. Actually, a friend of mine bought the back page of your paper for that election that year. I don't think I would have got elected without that back page.
Hey, bump the sports off.
Can't have it all done. Okay, at this time, we will go to oral communications. And we will have oral communications for the successor agency and the sanitary district at the same time. Peter Katz.
I'm going to miss Jim. He wrote a really good article. I think the best part of the paper was his editorials. He had a one-of-a-kind sense of humor, and he was very well-in-depth, especially in his love of the Civil War. Tonight, again, want to promote on behalf of the Vietnam War Museum of America Foundation, the All-American Boys Chorus Concert for Veterans will be here the day after tomorrow, right here in this building, at 6:30. It's free to all veterans, so veterans come down and enjoy the chorus of American music that will be presented at 6:30 PM. It's $10 to the general public, and the money raised goes towards what will be a wonderful museum to tell the story, not just of the Vietnam War and the American soldier, but the immigration and the impact on our culture of the Vietnamese people that have come to America and have created a new patch in the American quilt. And to give you a testament of how it impacts American culture, October 3rd is Vietnamese Fashion Week, and it is an event that will run all week long in Little Saigon, which I hope someday that this fashion event can be held at the museum. It's telecast around the world, and it brings in top designers from Milan, Paris, New York, and it is becoming a bigger and bigger event, and hopefully we can host that someday here in Garden Grove. And in October, we have our golf classic at the Naval Weapons Station. Anyone's interested in these events, our speaker series will be beginning shortly in the winter here, and so please come and support the museum. We're in the process of raising the money necessary to build this museum and open it to the general public. I think it'll be a tremendous tourist attraction on Harbor Boulevard and generate a lot of pride and revenue for the city of Garden Grove. And it'll be just one more event to keep people here in Garden Grove longer when they come on vacation from Southeast Asia and around the world. We are the number-one hotspot in the world for Asian travel, and it's only growing. It's expected to double over the next 10 years. So the cities of Los Angeles are preparing for it, and so is Orange County. Disney has expanded. There will be a new parking lot for Disney at the corner of Ball and Harbor, so they are expanding their park once again. So this will only help Garden Grove and generate more tourism and people staying here longer. I hope to see someday that Garden Grove will rival Anaheim in the number of hotels that we have and the events that we put on in this city to raise money for not just this museum, but others that will stretch down that boulevard. So please support these events, and I urge the Vietnamese community to help get behind this effort and tell their story, because soldiers are dying off and people's stories are being forgotten, and we're now into a third generation here, and we need to remind young kids born today of how their grandparents and their parents suffered coming here and how the American soldier defended freedom. So once again, I remind everyone that freedom is never free, and please support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny Pham.
My name is Kenny, and I'm here before you today to bring to your attention what I have been doing the past month. I've recently concerned myself with the development going on in Garden Grove, and there's a project that I see that's unfit for our city. I'm here to propose an alternative that I think will be much more attractive for the city, and I'm not asking for your endorsement, I'm merely asking for your acknowledgement. So I will be reading an overview from my petition to get you all up to speed in what I'm talking about here. A delightful oasis. As supporters of this petition, we demand that the city of Garden Grove, Great Wealth Resorts, and McWhinney halt the current development on Harbor Boulevard to reconsider and reevaluate the construction of the Waterpark Hotel. We demand that the draft for the development of the project site be reassessed and revised to accommodate all of that effects. We demand that all the parties involved in this project investigate the prospects of our alternative, because it is with our utmost concern for the overall well-being for the community that we impose our request upon the entitlement of the contractees. With all due respect, we do not believe that the current project will suffice to improve Garden Grove in a manner that is consistent with its character. We believe that the alternative is viable and will serve the city better with not just its practicality, but also its hospitality. This is a proposal for an alternative attraction like no other for the city of Garden Grove, California. Garden Grove is in the process of constructing a waterpark hotel that is just down the street from Disneyland. This attraction will be open year-round because of its indoor-outdoor layout. It will provide Disneyland goers and visitors a fun place to stay. It is said that this project will be good for the community. It will provide new jobs and a sizable revenue. But the use of good here couldn't be more shallow. The project, despite its benefits to our city, costs Garden Grove more than what it pays. We are selling ourselves out for a quick profit. Garden Grove should not lose its title as a unique city. It is a place that prides itself in a cultural diversity that has not seen in many other cities. This is not your typical city. In no way am I discrediting the contributors of this project. This endeavor is based off a working model, and it is so far successful. It promises certainty and is a safe investment. But should that mean we ought to be another generic city? We know where this path will lead. I propose an alternative construction project to take place. Instead of the waterpark hotel, we should build an attraction that features the Garden Park Tower. This idea stems from vertical farming in that it contains man-made biomes within its construct. Art and design will be infused into the architecture, and it would be unmistakably Garden Grove. This couldn't be more fitting. The Garden Park Tower will encompass the elements that will make a good public space. It will bring commerce and with that, its constituents. It will integrate the community and accentuate cultural diversity. Its topography will capture the dynamic nature of the city, and no aspect of it shall be left stagnant. It will not hinder, nor will it obstruct. The potential is vast, and anything is possible. The pursuit of this social enterprise is much more worthwhile. Fellow community members, changemakers, and well-wishers, please support my petition. Although this project affects only the immediate area, it will, excuse me, it will set a precedence for the nation as well as the world. The simple transformation of this parcel of land will have a beneficial impact on the surrounding community and visitors. It will be a wonder how a parcel of land could blossom into something so invaluable and essential to society. Constructing the water, excuse me, constructing the Garden Park Tower is sensible economically and aesthetically. This place will foster social development and cultural celebration while promoting health and education. We need to be innovative, original, and genuine if we are to inspire, captivate, and charm. It is with all my heart that I have placed my faith into this alternative project. I believe that it is something very attractive, and with a name like Garden Grove, it's so fitting. I ask that everyone here really consider what I'm saying and look into further and investigate this alternative. Thank you.
Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. There are many terms that people use that can have devastating effects on individuals, terms like bigotry, racism, and another term that's bandied about recently on the internet, nepotism. Now nepotism itself can cause severe damage to any organization, whether it's a business or a government. But like many other terms, when you start using these terms, the person or persons that are the target have no defense. They cannot disprove something that is not true. Now, the history of mankind shows that we have a tendency, of our children, to follow in the footsteps of their parents. In modern times, that means that they might go into the field of medicine, science, law, politics, or they might go into public safety. Now, the problem with someone following in their parents' footsteps is that they have to overcome the charge of favoritism, because they have to work harder and achieve more to be considered equally in the path of their chosen career. I think it is definitely something that needs to be crystal clear before anyone carelessly uses these terms. Now, a famous frontiersman, Davy Crockett, once said, "Be sure you're right, then go ahead." And of these people that would charge such a thing as nepotism, I would say, "Be sure you're right before you go ahead." Thank you.
Arlene Ho.
Hello? Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Arlene Ho, Secretary of UVSA, and I'm here again to speak on behalf of our executive board, especially our President Nana Tran, who unfortunately has an exam today, so she can't be here tonight. But I'd also like to reiterate that UVSA has been the successful host of the Thet Festival at Garden Grove Park for the past 11 years, and we appreciate the opportunity to negotiate with the city of Garden Grove to again bring the Vietnamese Community Festival to the park. And I'd like to keep my speech short tonight, so I would just like to emphasize a few points. We have submitted a proposal to Mr. Tom Nixon, in which we feel is very fair to both the city and to UVSA. Like I said before, we are willing to pay for full-cost recovery and avoid any of the hits to taxpayers. In terms of financial reviews, we have been working very diligently with the city CPA, and we have been providing him with necessary documentation to complete these reviews by his deadline of mid-October. Finally, with these points being settled, I would like to ask the esteemed council members to move along the process as quickly as possible in order to ensure the success of next year's festival. In the best interest of the community's festival, we hope that there will be no more holdups and no more politicking. All we want to do is continue this tradition of celebrating the Lunar New Year, and it would be great if it could continue in Garden Grove. We want this relationship to continue to be a win-win for not only you We want this relationship to continue to be a win-win for not only UVSA and the city, but most importantly, for the entire community. And on a completely unrelated note, I was a graduate of Garden Grove High School, sorry, and I would like to recognize Mr. Justin Valdez from the class of 2012. He was passed away on Monday in an unfortunate accident, and thank you, I'm sorry.
Thay Nguyen.
Yes, my name is Thay. I'm living in Garden Grove. Hello, mayor and city council. I already read the council about UVSA paying 10% for the cost of the Tet Festival. I think the UVSA should give a report to the city every year. I think the UVSA should give more back to the community, and especially the Garden Grove community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no more pink cards here. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, at this time, we will close oral communications, and we will recess the city council for the successor agent and the sanitary agency.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll call the September 24th meeting of the successor agency to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Member Phan.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communication, so we'll move on to consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman, before you take action, I'd like to request that Item 2E be pulled off the agenda. There will be no action on that item tonight, and therefore, you could move to Items 2A through 2D simultaneously.
Move to approve. Second.
Call the vote.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
No public hearings, no items for consideration, any matters from members?
No.
We are adjourned.
And at this time, we'll move to the sanitary district meeting. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Vice President Beard.
Here.
President Phan.
Here. We'll have one item for consent, which is 2A. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for vote, please.
Mr. Mayor.
I was dubious about that one.
Nothing else as far as public hearings or other items. Our next hearing will be October 22nd at 6:30.
Okay, we'll reconvene the city council this time. Go to consent items.
I move to approve that items.
Okay. We usually go through a little drill before we do that, but...
Just as well. Worked fine.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second. Call for vote.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
Commission items, matters.
Mr. Mayor, you have a letter of resignation from Administrative Board of Appeals Commissioner Patricia Boggs.
Would you...I'd like to say that we accept that with regret, and we'll go on from there. The appointments to the city commissions, there's a few of them open. We are going to let that set for another two weeks and then respond to that two weeks from now. We...matters from Mr. Chris?
Yeah, I'd like to express my condolences to the family and friends of Justin Valdez. I knew him as one of...I went over to Korea with the Sister City Association. He was one of the students. It's so sad, so tragic. He had so much going on for him. He was a bright young kid, humorous, intelligent, and the world will be a sadder place with his loss, and again, my condolences to his family and his friends on this tragic loss. On a more positive note, it's back to school for the kids, and I have a message from Mrs. Beard, who is a schoolteacher at Zine Elementary School, and her words are, "Do your homework and read every day." So that's my public service announcement for tonight to all the schoolers who are back to school, and that's it. Thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor. I do remember that young man, Justin, and from the Korean trip where he was introduced, I want to send my condolences to his family as well. I think all the people who show up here at the council at one point or another are very special people, otherwise they wouldn't want to be part of the city. On another note, I'd like to bring back what we were talking about last week, and I asked our Director of Communication to be here to clarify some information I have given out last week about the Tet Festival by the UVSA. Information that was given out by me in the last meeting was given to me by the staff, and staff is here to clarify two of the issues. One is the contribution that the city has been making in the last 11 years to the UVSA Festival, and the second is regarding the CPA. As far as the city, we have been given the power by law to contract for the people of Garden Grove, and when we contract for the people of Garden Grove, the people of Garden Grove has to benefit from a contract. If we feel that they are not benefiting from it, then we don't have to enter into a contract with any party, especially a private party promoting their own cause, and that's just a hint to anyone who wants to contract with the city. Also, because the city's benefit is of issue, the city will most likely will put in their contract a clause of transparency and of reporting, such as the toll company that tolls for the police department. We have a transparency clause of reporting, and we have auditing. Our sergeant will go out there and audit the facilities, such as the big development company who wants to go into our city and build big projects such as hotels. They need to show us their financial background, how they are going to comply with all the financial requirements, and such as the UVSA, in the last contract that we had with them in 2008, that was one of the terms is transparency. And the reason why is, by law, the city is a public sector, and anyone from the public can come to the city and ask for public record, and what is the city to do when the city has no public record of the contract that they enter into and the details of that contract so that the citizen would feel like they have been protected by the council members, the people who have been empowered by the people to contract for the residents of Garden Grove. With that, I also wanted to add my usual note is, remember to buy in Garden Grove and support our businesses, because they need us. We live in Garden Grove, and it's...more and more, we're having a lot more businesses and competition for us to pick and choose from, and Garden Grove is a good place to buy. I will hand this over to Kim when the council members are done with their notes.
Do you want Kim to say now or later?
Go ahead, Kim.
Okay, well, I just wanted to clarify something that Councilwoman Nguyen was mentioning, and that is the agreement that we currently have with the Union of Vietnamese Students Association. Part of that agreement talks about financial review, and I wanted to clarify, the way that the agreement is written says that the city will identify and select an independent certified public accountant to actually conduct a review of the expenditures annually. And since 2008, when we started this contract in 2008, this last five-year agreement, we did originally select an accountant, the city did, which was Mr. Lee, Mr. Kim Lee. During the course of the five-year agreement, we were requested by the students to allow them to get an accountant to conduct the last three years of the festival's activities. So we allowed the students to go out and actually select the accountant, and then the city entered into an agreement with that accountant. So just to clarify, although the agreement actually says that the city is supposed to select them, we actually allowed the students to select them for this last review period. So I just wanted to, I think, clarify that. I don't think it was clear two weeks ago, and just wanted to make sure that those statements were clear.
Okay, thank you very much. Chris.
Thanks, sir. I also want to send my condolences to Justin's friends and family on his passing. Additionally, Kenny, if you can spare a moment of your time after the meeting and speak to me about your ideas, I'd love to hear more about it. And then lastly, you're probably wondering why I have this bullseye on my chest here. It's because I got the sticker from giving blood today, this afternoon, and I want to acknowledge and thank our wonderful staff and our people in the city who came out to support the blood drive here at our community center. Apparently, they had 12 walk-ins, and they were way behind because of the support and the poor of help that they received. On a personal note, giving blood is so important. When I was in Iraq, we got into some sticky situations where we were engaged and got hit with IEDs, and some of our friends and some of my colleagues basically were on death toe unless it was going to be with Red Cross help or with some sort of blood support that if it wasn't there, they would probably have not made it back from Iraq. So it's really vital that we, as a city and just as a community, come together and give blood when we can, just because you never know when it will be your turn who will need the blood and the support. So I encourage everyone to come out the next time we have a blood drive. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you. I just want to reach out and acknowledge Mr. Kenny Pham for coming here tonight, and just basically say I would love to see you take that intelligence and your articulation that you have and channel it and help us focus it in a positive direction for the city. We could certainly use new ideas, fresh young minds looking at things like that in the city. As far as that actual project, that's been years in the making, and there was a several year period where it went through public hearing process and design and planning, and there was a lot of public outreach, and there were a number of town hall meetings and different opportunities to kind of weigh in. That's been fully approved, so there's a development agreement in place that's been in place now for several years. And since then, we obviously had some turbulence with the economy, but we also had problems with just redevelopment agencies being abolished by the governor's office up north, and so that project has withstood the scrutiny of the State Department of Finance and not only been approved here at the local level, but approved at the state level. So as long as they're able to perform and go forward, there's nothing that the city could do now to reverse that, you know? I mean, they have a contractual agreement to be able to go forward and do what they've spent millions of dollars preparing. And just to be clear, there's absolutely nothing cookie cutter about that project. It's not like putting in a Motel 6 there. I mean, it's a themed water park hotel with 100,000 square foot indoor-outdoor water feature thing. It's a pretty elaborate thing, so I mean, we're pretty excited about it in terms of being innovative and different and capitalizing on the 20 million natural tourists that come through the Disney area per year and our proximity to that. So not to discourage you from your concept, I'd love to hear about it. Personally, I'm sure the rest of us would as well, but maybe there's another site for it, maybe there's another way to look at this and try and reel you in and get you on board with kind of the vision that we've been creating along that stretch for a number of years now.
I'd like to mention Thursday night, there's going to be the boys choir for the War Museum. It's going to be fantastic. It's inexpensive, it's $10, but if you're a military person, you can get in for nothing if you've been in the military. I have been in the military, and I still will pay my $10. It's going to be good. And then on Wednesday, October 25th, the Vietnam War Museum is putting on a golf tournament at the golf course over at Los Alamos Naval Base, Los Alamos Base there, and that will be fun. If you're a golfer, I hope you can show up. It's not inexpensive, but all the extra money goes to the museum. Justin Valdez, that is a big one, was tragically taken away from the Garden Grove family last night, a student at San Francisco State University. Justin was interested in all environmental studies. He went to Garden Grove High School, as Arlene mentioned, and my two boys both went to Garden Grove High School. Justin was a fine young man, and I hope he will be remembered long, no doubt about that. Also, we had another death in Garden Grove, and that is Dory Devine, a long member of the honorary board of the Director of Women's Division in the Chamber of Commerce. There was, at one time, I don't think it was anything, Dory was now that. She was a feisty lady. She let me know she had never voted for me and never going to vote for me. She was an enjoyable person to talk to, and she will be missed. I would like to mention this young man, what he was talking about. The water park. I don't think Disneyland's going to like that at all. That's a destination. I mean, that's where people are going to come for the water park, and I can't see anybody that has ever been in one of the gray wolf water parks could imagine being opposed to it. It is a place for little boys and little girls. It is a fantastic, fantastic place. I can remember going down in the basement, they gave us a full tour of it in Texas, the one they have in Texas, and all these little girls were lined up against the wall for long distance, and I thought to myself, what? And I did, I said it to the guy that was giving us the tour, what are they all lined up for? And he says, well, they're getting their pedicure this morning. It was really fun. It was fun to see them, it was fun, and it's going to be fun when it gets to Garden Grove. And your idea may be a good idea. I didn't quite gather what it was about, but bring it to us. We're interested in ideas. We're interested in new ideas. At this time, we're going to go into oral, I mean, into private communications, where we have one thing on the session and the Union of Vietnamese Student Association regarding the Tet Festival, and I will be back to report on that. City council is closed. What are we coming back to? October something eighth.